Good evening and welcome to the July 23 Bloomington Planning Commission Meeting. The Planning Commission advises the City Council on development proposals, development standards, long-range planning, and transportation issues. Some of the issues the Planning Commission has final authority for and others the City Council will make the final decision. The Planning Commission is made up of seven volunteers that are appointed by the City Council for, to serve for up to three years at a time. Tonight, we have four regular agenda items and our fifth agenda item will move into a study session. But before we start, if those in the chambers can rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Markergard, do you want to give a little update? Process?
Sure. So, Mr. Chairman, due to the pandemic, we are remote again this evening. It's our ninth time we've been remote with the Planning Commission since March. But the meeting is definitely open to the public and open to testimony. You can call in and we'll get you signed up to speak. So you can call the number on the screen, nine five two five six three eight nine two six. If you prefer, you can email as well, planning@bloomingtonmn.gov. And we will have this number scrolling across the screen throughout the telecast and we'll bring it up a few more times tonight, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. And then, just for those that are listening or may call in who are not familiar with the process, the Planning Commission will first hear a staff report given by city planning staff. And then after that, we'll generally ask for the applicant to provide some comments. And at that point, we'll open that up to the public to speak to the application. If there's a lot of individuals that would like to speak, we do reserve the right to limit the amount of time for the initial discussion. And if everybody finishes, we give a chance to come up and address the commission again. If you do have any comments, the questions should be directed again at the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission will decide if they're relevant for our discussion and decision-making tonight. They should not be directed at the applicant. That being said, Mr. Johnson, can you give us our first item tonight? Success Academy.
I can. Thank you, Chairman Solberg. And this is Nick Johnson. I'm one of the city planners here. Certainly a welcome to Commissioner Abdi and Commissioner Cookedon. Thanks for your service to the commission. We do have a presentation for you here this evening. Are you able to see my screen okay?
We can, yep.
Great.
Although it is not full screen yet.
Okay, let's try and try something else here. One second. Thanks for bearing with me. While I'm juggling with the technology, I just wanted to note that there are some additional staff who are with me this evening to make this presentation. Amy Marone from the city's traffic division, as well as Brian Hanson. The city engineer Julie Long is also on the call. And in the case of this application, there was some traffic analysis done by a third-party consultant. So Brian Nemeth from Boltman Mank is also available for questions on this item. So just wanted to make that clear as well. So let's try this again. Sorry for the delay here. How does that look?
Looks good.
Okay. So there are two applications before you this evening. In Agenda Item 1, there's a conditional use permit and there is final development plans. The CUP is applicable to a proposed increase of student enrollment at an existing pre-K through eighth grade school, as well as for a greenhouse addition. And the final development plans is specifically for the proposed greenhouse addition to the school. The applicant is Success Academy as the user and Algezari Institute Property LLC is the owner. The property is located at 8201 Park Avenue South. The property is surrounded by Smith Park to the east and to the north. And then there are residential, single-family neighborhoods to the west and to the south. That provides a general outline of the property. Just to note the proximity of the park, there also is some shared uses between the public park and the school by agreement. We'll talk about that as well as part of the presentation. So as I mentioned before, there's kind of two facets to this application. One is the proposed increase in student enrollment. And the other aspect of the application is a proposed greenhouse addition. It's just a little under 1,000 square feet in size. You can see in green outline where the proposed greenhouse addition would occur at the facility. And so you'll note that on the screen here in this blue box, the school is highlighted as well as the greenhouse addition is in a different highlight. The other text is in white text. The reason I mention it in that way is that this site operates under an existing conditional use permit that was approved in 2018. Some of you were actually on the commission, the last application that was approved for this site. And so there are other uses at this facility. There is a place of assembly and community center use in addition to the school. And so those uses, what I want to emphasize is that those uses are proposed to remain the same. They're not proposed to change in any way as part of this application. So really, even though there is a multi-use aspect to this facility, what we're really focusing on tonight is the school enrollment and then a proposed addition that would be a greenhouse. So we'll get into that as well. I would note that key to the proposed enrollment expansion is of 50 students. That's what they're proposing to increase it from 130 students to 180 students. What they're proposing to do is start a hybrid education program. So I have a slide here on that. Per the applicant's materials, they are proposing a hybrid education model for their middle school program, and that's grades six through eight. And what's key to this application is the schedule. The students who are enrolled in this hybrid education program would attend onsite instruction Monday through Thursday, so typical classroom instruction on those days. And then they would attend virtual instruction offsite on Fridays. Certainly, in the pandemic, people are getting more adjusted to virtual instruction, but this is not intended as a response to the pandemic, is my understanding. It is intended as a permanent schedule per the CUP. And this type of programming is utilized at other schools in the state, and it is authorized under state law and state statute as governed by the Minnesota Department of Education. So there is a state statute reference there on the screen that is the base statute for this type of programming. One thing that's important to note about this application is that there's no physical changes proposed to the facility except for the greenhouse addition that's involved with the final development plans. So the school has adequate classroom space currently to accommodate these additional students within their existing space. They're not proposing to construct any additional classroom space. And we'll get into the floor plan as well. So as I noted before, there is an existing conditional use permit for this site and there's a fairly lengthy history of use at this site. So I just want to go over that, maybe more for the benefit for the public and for the commissioners who weren't on the board in 2018. But the facility was originally built in 1962 as a public elementary school, North Gate. Ultimately, the public elementary school vacated the school. And a private high school was established in 1990, a private Lutheran high school called Concordia. They operated there up until 2009, at which point they vacated. And at which point in 2011, the string of conditional use permits for the use mix that you currently see there was established. So in 2011 is when they started use of the facility, not the specific school or exactly the same owner, but this mix of uses, I would say. Just to note, there was a daycare that was originally approved in 2011. I'll speak to that in a minute. But in 2018, there was two conditional use permits that were applied for and were approved that had to do with the expansion of student enrollment similar to kind of the application that's before you this evening. In 2018, the enrollment was increased from 60 students to 84 students. That application was approved in the early part of 2018. And then in 2018, a additional conditional use permit to expand the student enrollment from 84 students to 130 students was approved. It was part of that 2018 actions where the daycare use was vacated. Daycare is no longer possible at this facility due to some of the standards for daycares and institutional uses. So just to note that that's no longer a part of this facility. And in 2018, the key, the second application in 2018, which is of a key subject matter for tonight's review and action, there was a traffic study and numerous traffic mitigation measures that were deployed as part of that action in September of 2018. So we'll get into that and we'll provide an overview of those. Boltman Mank completed that prior traffic study. And we'll get into more detail with that, but they collected a lot of tube data, so traffic counts as well as traffic turning movements. It was a pretty extensive study completed by Boltman Mank. So we'll get into how that analysis informs what's before you this evening. And again, just to reiterate, tonight's application, expanding the student enrollment by 50 students up to a total of 180 through a hybrid program, and then also that greenhouse addition. For those who are not as part of that action 2018, what the key city code section that has to do with the expansion of an institutional use, there's a number of different uses that fall under institutional uses in city code. But this ordinance was established in 2013. And what it was intended to do was to allow for the construction and expansion of these institutional uses while at the same time recognizing that many of them are located in low-density residential neighborhoods. It's not uncommon for a place of assembly or a school or these types of uses to be located within neighborhoods. And so one of the key provisions that we'll talk about is when one of these uses or facilities is on a street that is not designated as an arterial collector road, there are some traffic, there are some limitations of expansion that have to do with the number of trips and traffic that is generated from the facility. So that is what we're really going to be focusing on tonight is that traffic analysis and how it relates to the institutional use ordinance, and we'll get into those standards. One key last thing I'll say about the institutional use standards is that it does give the city latitude or authority to require a traffic study be done when an expansion is proposed. And so with that last application in 2018, the last action in the existing conditional use permit, that is what triggered that traffic study back then, was the expansion of the institutional use at that time. So as part of that last approval in 2018, there was a number of traffic mitigation strategies or improvements that were recommended by the Boltman Mank study in 2018, and they were all deployed prior to the increase of the student enrollment. So I just want to go through those with you to kind of get a better understanding of what the existing condition of the site is. There was a one-way site circulation pattern that was implemented at the school. I'll show you that. There were some intersection improvements at Park Avenue and East 82nd Street. There was a driveway connection from the facility down to East 83rd Street. There were some sidewalk improvements. And then finally, then there was also a dedicated driveway to the Smith Park parking lot that was installed to Park Avenue. So getting into those specifically and what their utility or what their value are they bring to the site. One-way site circulation is very common at school uses, particularly when you have young children. So there's a couple of things to look at here. There is dedicated enter-only or exit-only egress driveways. So prior to this being implemented, you could leave and enter the site at both of those driveways that you see along Park Avenue. So what that does is can create additional congestion that is unnecessary as well as turning movements either into one another or just a little bit more unpredictable traffic situation along Park Avenue. So now those are dedicated as egress only or ingress only. And then secondarily, they implemented a one-way drive aisle for the drive aisle that is along the school where all the drop-offs occur, including the school buses. The eastern drive aisle, that is northbound only, as you can see there. And so what that does is again, it's more predictable traffic pattern within the site. That's important when you have pedestrians, particularly children, coming to the site. And in addition, it makes it just ease for drop-off. It's a very common circulation model for schools. Some intersection improvements. So as part of the pavement management program, the city worked with the applicant to assess some improvements at the intersection of Park Avenue and East 82nd Street. They installed crosswalks with truncated domes as well as a pedestrian refuge and median. And so that serves as a couple of benefits. One, it gives pedestrians a shorter path to travel to cross the street. It is a much better visual for drivers to see that this is a dedicated area for pedestrians to cross the street. Again, important with children. And then secondarily, it also serves as a traffic calming measure. So with a narrower driveline through that area, cars automatically get that perception to slow down, which is also an important safety feature. So the next measure that they implemented, if you can see the map on the right screen, the right side of the slide, that is the parking lot, the southern portion of the parking lot at the site. And the traffic study recommended completing that section of driveway down to East 83rd Street. And the reason that that recommendation was made and ultimately followed is that currently all of the traffic that was coming to this facility only came through or had to travel up and down Park Avenue. By completing this driveway segment, it gives visitors and patrons another option for ingress and egress. It allows them to, another way to leave the site. This is particularly important for the place of assembly. If they have larger assemblies at events or holidays or things of that nature, including the school, too. But if you have a large number of patrons at a facility like this, it's good to have multiple ways to get in and out of the site. Just, it does a much better job of distributing the traffic throughout the neighborhood. So with this driveway now in place, you could visit this site with even, without having to drive on Park Avenue at all. You could come straight in on East 83rd Street. So it just provides more options. There were some minor sidewalk improvements that were completed as part of the study by Boltman Mank. They just, basically, there was a missing section of sidewalk that provided connection to the public sidewalk network. And also the missing sidewalk, they completed also provided ADA pad ramps, ADA compliant ramps. And finally, the last piece of this that was completed as part of the approval in 2018 is that again, part of that pavement management project, the city installed the driveway to Smith Park parking lot. Prior to the installation of this driveway, you actually had to circulate through the school site in order to get to the city's park parking lot. It was through a access easement, and that actually, that easement still exists to this day. But in other words, it just brought unnecessary traffic further south and also had it circulating through the school parking lot. With, you know, again, with smaller children attending the school, as much of that traffic that's just headed to the, dedicated to the park, as much of that traffic that you can remove from the equation of the school facility, that's a positive thing as well. And also reduces the number of trips further south along Park Avenue. I should just note that the city was the leader on this aspect of it, but the property owner did participate in the construction of this driveway in the amount of $10,000. They agreed to participate in it. So there was kind of a partnership in that regard. So getting on to the traffic analysis, I want to be specific about what the institutional use standards say. And again, the analysis that was performed in 2018, that was kind of the, that was really the baseline, if you will, that serves as the foundation of this current analysis. There was a significant amount of data collection that was done in 2018. And what that, what that ultimately resulted in is creating different rates at which trips are generated by the school use depending on the number of students associated with the school. So I'll get into that here shortly. But just a couple of key points. One thing to understand about the study is that although the current enrollment of the school is 130 students, because the institutional use standards are measured or applied from the first expansion of the use following the adoption of that ordinance, the school was originally 60 students. So that is why that serves as the baseline for any subsequent expansion of the facility. Because if it was not tied back to that original baseline, then any institutional use could continue to modestly expand and still stay under all the traffic thresholds if it was not tied to the original baseline. So hopefully that makes sense. I don't want to get too far in the weeds, but it's just an important thing to note. Another thing to note here is again, in this ordinance, there are specific traffic thresholds that cannot be crossed when an institutional use is on a local residential street, except for if mitigation measures are deployed, which in the judgment of the city council, do counteract or do address the negative impacts associated with the expansion of the facility in terms of pedestrian and vehicular safety and just overall residential livability. So I just want to note that these are the three thresholds that we're looking at tonight. But what's important to emphasize is that this facility, as a result of the last traffic study, did pursue all of the mitigation measures that were recommended by that study. They made significant safety improvements to the area for traffic, for vehicles, for pedestrians, as it just related to that last action in 2018. But getting into the thresholds themselves, these are the three thresholds, and I want to read these out because they're important in terms of the findings of the traffic analysis. So the expansion cannot add 300 or more trips per day to a local residential street at least once per week on a regular basis. So that's daily trips. Cannot add 100 or more new trips per day on a local residential street such that the total trips on that local residential street add up to a total of over 1,000 trips per day at least once per week on a regular basis. Or produces 100 or more trips per hour during the peak hour of trip generation for the proposed site at least once per week, again, on a regular basis. So there's the 300 daily trips, there's the 100 trips that would extend a local residential street over 1,000. And in terms of why that number, that's right now just a baseline number for when you start to see residential traffic or traffic in a local residential street, get on the higher end of a local road. And then finally, there's that peak hour. So when you see that peak hour of traffic, the expansion relating to 100 trips. So these three things are what serves as the baseline for the traffic analysis that you see in this application. So Boltman Mank did produce a study. It was in your packet. Again, Brian Nemeth is on the call as well as city's traffic staff if you have questions. But this is the basics of the findings. They go through all three of these thresholds. So again, adding 300 trips per day to a local residential street. So from that baseline of 60 students, 180 students at the established rate, the trip rate per student, the daily trip rate, would get you up to 298 trips. So this is bumping up right up to that threshold of the maximum where exceeding that would require, in the judgment of city council, that mitigation has occurred to go above that number. So they're staying below the numbers established in the ordinance. So this is the second threshold. This is again, adding 100 trips or more when it would exceed 1,000 trips over a local residential street. There's a couple of different colors I want to draw your attention to. Green is the baseline number. So that's the multi-use facility with the 60-student baseline. The blue number that you see Monday through Thursday, this represents an increase of 120 students at the school because again, it includes those additional 50 students in the hybrid program who are only attending school Monday through Thursday onsite. And then finally, on Friday, you see that purple color. That represents the increase of trips from the last application in 2018, when they went up to 130 students. So they went up, they were, the traffic analysis showed that that expansion on Fridays only because again, that's the busiest day, I believe, at the place of assembly, that that was on Park Avenue bumping up to the 1,000-trip threshold. So again, this application is not exceeding the second threshold. The third threshold has to do with the peak hour trips. Again, cannot go over 100 without crashing the established threshold. The expansion from 60 students to 180 students, again, 120-student increase at a peak hour rate of .8 trips per student, that gets you to 96 peak hour trips. So again, still under the established threshold. Getting to the study recommendations, what the findings were, the conclusions by Boltman Mank. And again, they're available if there's questions, but basically, they talked about what mitigations were deployed and what mitigations might be valuable to going forward or what just needs monitoring. So at this time, they're not recommending any additional mitigations be deployed at this time. They take note of the mitigations that have already been deployed, but they do say that there are some things that the city traffic staff should keep an eye on in terms of some smaller things that could provide improvement should there be a problem in the future. So just a note to keep an eye on these things, but no additional mitigation is being recommended at this time by Boltman Mank. So getting into the CUP conditions of approval, if you reviewed the staff's list of recommended conditions, it's a fairly long list. And the reason being is that this conditional use permit before you this evening would actually replace the existing one. So it's not just an amendment. I know we have processed amendments in some ways in the past, but this actually serves as a cleaner record for the property moving forward. And with that, there's a number of conditions that apply to other aspects of the multi-use facility that are just simply conditions that are carried forward from the 2018 approval. The one that I want to draw the most attention to is condition number eight. And what that condition is, it really relates to the occupancy of the facility, and more specifically, non-concurrent use. Non-concurrent use conditions are very common for CUPs for places of assembly. And the reason being is that if you think about most places of assembly, they have multiple larger areas to assemble in. And so very rarely is the full occupancy of a place of assembly all occurring in the full aspect of the building all at the same time. If that were the case, you know, these sites simply wouldn't have enough parking and it would be a significant amount of use all occurring at the same time. So what non-concurrent use conditions do is they just state that it really just kind of limits the full use of the building all at the same time. And so that's what you see in condition number eight. And then what I have before you on the slide there is how condition number eight is being amended from the existing conditional use permit to this proposed conditional use permit. I just want to read this language as it relates to condition 8A and 8B. It says the pre-kindergarten, eighth grade It says, "The pre-kindergarten eighth-grade school is limited to a total enrollment of 180 students." So that's again, increased from 130 students, "at least 50 of which must be enrolled in the hybrid education program." And then condition 8B is defining the hybrid education program. It states, "The hybrid education program is limited to onsite instruction Monday through Thursday. No onsite instruction may be provided on Fridays. Hybrid education program participants." So hopefully, that's quite clear as to how the enforcement and the conditional use permit addresses the hybrid program and the increase in student enrollment. Just want to talk briefly about Smith Park and the joint use agreement, just because we get some questions from the public about the joint use and then just thinking about for the commission, how does the expansion of student enrollment by 50 students, you know, how does that interact with the park and whatnot? The the joint use agreement was actually established with the private high school that was the previous occupant of this site. So it's been a longstanding agreement in place in this location. And in addition to that, these types of agreements are very common between the city of Bloomington and our public parks and other schools, including a number of Bloomington Public Schools. So basically, what it states is that there is, you know, some shared facilities in the standpoint of parking. The Success Academy site can utilize parking on the Smith Park site and vice versa. There is some share of use on the athletic fields, you know, one's able to use the other and vice versa. And so this is a really common thing that exists at schools that are also adjoining Bloomington Public Parks. I just want to note for the record that planning staff did speak and meet with our Parks and Recreation staff and did ask them if the expansion of the student enrollment, you know, gave them any pause or consideration as far as, you know, impacts on the use of Smith Park. And there was no concern listed whatsoever. They are happy with the arrangement and agreement that they have in terms of working with the applicant and feel it's an appropriate use of the park and the playground equipment as well. Yeah, I think that's enough said on that. So this is kind of transitioning to my second part of the presentation. This part is a little bit shorter than the first half, just getting on that specific greenhouse addition. So here you see a rendering of the the addition in that location that I mentioned earlier, you know, like any typical greenhouse, it's constructed out of transparent windows to allow sunlight to get through in a climate-controlled environment. Again, that is the site plan of where the proposed greenhouse addition is located. So this building addition is located very far away from the the property boundaries, so certainly complies with all setback requirements. One thing to note that has to do with why the greenhouse also is tied to the CUP is that place of assembly sites, and even though this is a mixed-use facility, it still is tied to those place of assembly standards in our code, there's a maximum structure coverage of 15%. Actually, the baseline is 12%. And when you go above the baseline of 12%, you can go up to a maximum of 15%. It requires city council approval to go above to expand on a place of assembly site. So they are expanding from 14.2% to 14.3%. It's a very modest increase. Again, this addition is only 1,000 square feet in size. Here is the existing floor plan. As I noted before, there's no physical changes being proposed to the facility except for the greenhouse. So I have that greenhouse area outlined in red cloud up there in the upper right-hand part of the floor plan. But just to give you a flavor, for those folks who are unfamiliar with this facility, the classroom uses are in blue, the gyms are in orange, there's a number of different offices. You see the place of assembly is in the southern portion of the facility with the school being more in the northern two-thirds, if you will. So that's just basically how the the facility lays out. And again, there's no changes to the facility except for the proposed greenhouse. There's the floor plan of the greenhouse. It includes a small storage area and then just mostly the majority of it is the growing area. In terms of how this addition affects off-street parking, tied back to those non-concurrent use conditions like I talked about, that impacts the parking calculation at a site. And so if you were able to review the the planning commission report from 2018, there's three different use scenarios that were studied for parking. And because, again, because of those occupancy conditions that I talked about, they're not able to use the full aspect of the facility all at the same time. And so there's these different use scenarios. And what that results in is that the maximum use scenario, our city code would require 249 parking spaces. Site has a supply of 261 parking spaces. It's slightly reduced because of that driveway to Smith Park. So onsite and parking spaces via agreement. And there is also actually a 49-stall proof of parking agreement that is also required against the property should they ever need to construct more parking here. So there's more than enough adequate parking supply. Just from a code perspective, what the expansion of the school does is it expands use scenario number one from 106 space parking requirement to 107 space parking requirement. So substantively, it has no, the greenhouse addition has no impact on the required parking for the facility. Just from a miscellaneous standpoint, I just want to note a couple of other conditions. They are required to enter into a site development agreement with the city. What that basically does is memorialize all the conditions of approval and acknowledgement on the part of the property owner. There is a kitchen at the school that they currently use on a limited basis, only with catering only for the students. If they were ever to expand their use of the kitchen, they would have to get a revised food service plan approved by our environmental health division. So there is a condition that speaks to that. And then finally, just more minor issue, but there are some trees that may need to be removed to install the greenhouse addition. The site is non-conforming for landscaping. So if they remove some existing trees onsite, they would have to replace that elsewhere and provide us with a plan of where they're doing that. But that would just be prior to the issuance of a building permit for the greenhouse. There was a quite a volume of public testimony received and written testimony. I think we received 24 emails from 13 different parties. Some of the themes you're familiar from 2018, but continue, concerns about traffic, on-street parking, usage of Smith Park, facility use and the occupancy, and then opposition to the expansion of the student enrollment. And then there was also a fair amount of correspondence that was supportive of the expansion of the student enrollment submitted as well. So that just gives you a kind of flavor overview of the correspondence received. Just as a reminder, Glenn, the planning manager, mentioned this at the start of the meeting, but this is a public hearing, and if you want to provide live testimony, you do have the phone number to call and the email address that you could send comments to as well. With that, staff does recommend approval. There's two suggested motions that we have here for you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Couple of questions and probably more to do with the parking, the traffic analysis. So I don't know if Amy Moron wants to handle that or Brian Nemeth, but really, one of them is the use that was done for the traffic analysis was, I believe it was referred to as private school. Are there other options that are available? Just wondering, is that, did, was that the most appropriate use or how do you determine Amy Moron, do you?
I can, I can speak up on this. We looked at multiple different options for what type of school. We looked at the charter school use, private school use, elementary school use, and if it was a junior high, high school use. And we took the highest rate available for many of those uses to kind of cover as more of a conservative account for that.
Okay, thank you. And then the the second question is really, Mr. Nemeth is on the recommendation, and I just wanted to verify, I think, recommendations if there were, what was the reference? Additional, there you go, if traffic demand shows, the additional parking. The question I have there was that, is that on top of the existing and proof of parking? Or was that, would that take into account the proof of parking on the site?
That would take into account the proof of parking onsite.
Okay, thank you. Are there, looks like Commissioner Roman has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Johnson, we talk about updating the parking study. Was there any traffic counts done to validate against the assumptions in the 2018 study?
Yeah, Chairman Solberg, Commissioner Roman, there was not any data collected this year. I certainly would welcome Brian Nemeth's thoughts on that as well, but my, my take on that is that under the current conditions of the pandemic, it would really not yield you good, solid results in terms of what the existing condition is today. But I let the traffic folks seek to it, but I think data that's collected within a span of just short two years ago or even less than that now would still be considered significant or statistically significant data in the traffic world, but I would let them confirm
This is Brian Nemeth. Yes, usually any counts are done within a three-year time span are considered to be generally the same, and no change to be done with that. And yeah, because of the pandemic, we feel that, you know, any new counts you're going to do are going to be exceptionally low, and we wouldn't want to use those as a base condition.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could?
Go ahead.
And so I understand the the three-year aging. However, there was a significant change in use on weekdays after the last CUP. And I get that the pandemic is obviously throwing all that for a loop. I'm not sure, do we know, when did the applicant indicate that they were interested in making this expansion and would that have affected our decision? Would it might have expected our decision on timing of doing an update versus before or after the stay-at-home from schools?
Yeah, Commissioner, Chairman Solberg, Commissioner Roman, I can confirm that staff was not contacted about this application prior to the start of the pandemic, if you will, when some of the shutdowns occurred, and I think you saw the associated drop in traffic. I would let the applicants speak for themselves on this one, but I don't think that that, in my judgment, it did not, it wasn't a strategic move on their part. That's just from being around the situation.
Oh, so no, I was not suggesting that, but thank you.
Sorry.
Is that all, Commissioner Roman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Goldsman, you have a question or questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thanks for your time. One of my questions is around, you know, traffic study, but the question is on busing. So I know that we have busing of these, of these children to and from school. And I remember from the previous conversation or the the previous CUP was, there was discussions on busing. So I guess a question that I have is, do we know what percentage of these children are bused? That could potentially be kind of a mitigation or understanding what that percentage is to really understand what the impact of traffic could be. So just kind of looking for an understanding of how the busing situation is and the percentage of those students being bused.
Chairman, Chairman Solberg, thank you for the question. Commissioner Goldsman, I don't know the percentage at this time. I know Magdi Rabia, who is the executive director of the school, is on the call, so he could speak to the existing snapshot. But just from a staff perspective, the reason why some of that data, you know, while it is anecdotal and may provide support for certain actions, why we don't use it for, as a baseline, is that those conditions are highly subject to change from year to year. So with conditional use permits, you know, approvals that run for long periods of time, we don't want to depend on kind of an operational plan on the part of the applicant that may not be sustainable, if you will. But I think that would be a good question for the applicant to put that on the record as well.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Apologies if I missed this, but I, you know, going through some of the public comment, folks who are in favor of this project, the number of 450 units, 450 students is used multiple times. Wonder, can you clarify that for me? We're looking at 180 students at this site, correct?
Chairman Solberg, Commissioner Albrecht, thanks for the question. I think what that number is tied to, and Glenn can correct me if I'm wrong, but what that number is that they reference is that that was one, some of the kind of peak historic enrollment numbers of the public elementary school and/or private high school. So I think the reason why, you know, some people kind of key into that number, want to reference that number, is that the enrollment of the school used to be quite higher, but it was not a multi-use facility at that time, at least on the same level that it is now. So hopefully, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Commissioner Corman, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to follow up on the question of Commissioner Goldsman, it would also be helpful to know if this enrollment, also it's, if it's, if there are, if there's increasing enrollment within the same families, meaning that maybe in the same car is just going to be an extra student versus having more, more people driving to the school, in and out of the school? And also, if we could have a number of, how many of those kids are actually walking or expected to walk as well versus being transported?
Chairman Solberg, Commissioner Corman, thanks for the question. Just similar as to before, I think all those things are great to know. We don't use that data to make, you know, to form our recommendation. We're more reliant on the study. But that, that is definitely good anecdotal information to know, just as long as with the understanding that it is subject to change from as the students who are in the school matriculate or move on.
Commissioner Corman, do you still have a question? Or I see the hand is up, so.
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Johnson, just if I could, or maybe one of the traffic professionals, I know you talked a little bit about the specifics of, in Commissioner Corman's question and I think others, a little bit, if somebody could explain a little bit more about the, the general practice of, of traffic studies and, and why they don't go to the potential for land use, if they bus or don't bus, or how many ride in a multi, multi-students ride in a vehicle? If someone could explain that a little bit more in depth, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, Chairman Solberg, Brian, do you want to maybe speak to that?
Yeah, I can speak to that for sure. So, you know, typically, what we're looking at is the Institute of Transportation Engineers does, collects information throughout from different consultants and areas around the United States. And so what they're doing is developing rates based on the number of students typically for schools. And so they have different school categories, and that gets into why we chose kind of the, we have a charter school, we have the, the private school. And those kind of relate a little bit to the busing, like public schools tend to have a lot more students that are, that are busing, especially, you know, if you look back 20 years compared to today. And private schools and charter schools tend to have more people driving and dropping off. The mix of, you know, multiple grade, grades together, that accounts for, there's different IT rates for a private school that includes, you know, all grades, which is what we did here, versus just elementary. So we're using the, the general rate here. The biggest thing is, you know, is looking at that is because busing can change and everything else, that we really just look at what's a good rate for the type of use it is. And again, we're, we're using conservative, which private schools tend to have almost zero busing usually with that is because you're looking at a diverse area that students are coming from versus even a charter school, which would probably usually have a mix of busing and vehicles being driven by individuals. So we, we're kind of taking the, the worst case. So in case of the busing, any busing goes away, that we're covered in that, in that case for the numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Nemeth. Are there any additional questions from the commissioners for staff? Seeing none, would the applicant like to speak? And looks like we, we have a hand up, so I guess that means yes.
Want to say thank you to staff, of course, for doing a great job on that summary and presentation. This is very complex issues in. presentation. This is very complex issues, uh, and staff has done a good job. Uh, as Nick indicated, we are applying for a conditional use permit to increase the number of students from 130 to 180. Uh, but of course, uh, this is a hybrid program, uh, so it's not going to be the same thing that you, uh, would typically see in a traditional program. Uh, and in addition, there is the 700 square foot greenhouse. This proposed hybrid model, uh, will include, as staff indicated, 50 middle school students. This is going to, uh, consist of onsite instruction Monday through Thursday, which is more traditional, but distance learning on Fridays, which will be offsite. So no additional onsite traffic, no additional staff, uh, and no additional students on Fridays. This is a model that unfortunately during this pandemic, all schools across the country, uh, have been forced to adapt to, but it has been in place with success, uh, in many schools, both locally and nationally for many years. Success Academy is committed to using this model, uh, and has proven this model during the last several months. Uh, and of course, it is a MDE-approved model. However, this is intended to be a permanent program. So even if and when things return to normal, uh, even though that may not be in the fall, uh, whenever that occurs, this will continue to remain a hybrid model in, in perpetuity. Now, we do understand that, uh, traffic has been a concern in this area, particularly back in 2018 when the school expanded. However, Success Academy has, uh, made a concerted effort, as staff indicated, to mitigate those issues and reduce the amount of traffic. That includes substantial curb and intersection improvements, the drive aisle circulation and conversion to one-way traffic, uh, additional driveways and additional pedestrian improvements. There's also going to be continued efforts, uh, to improve circulation and reduce traffic whenever possible. Uh, so be rest assured that Success Academy is going to, uh, be sensitive to these issues. And of course, uh, ever-present is the institutional use standard thresholds, as the staff report indicates. And for the report, this model, this hybrid model, uh, will not trigger any of those thresholds and will, uh, will not result in, in mandatory mitigation. So with that, I will ask that the, the planning commission would approve this application, and I would note that Success Academy does not, uh, object to any of the conditions of approval. But I'm happy to answer any questions, and I also have, uh, Magdi Rabia, the executive director, who, uh, who is also on the line and available to answer questions that you may have.
Thank you. Uh, Magni, Magdi Rabia, do you, uh, have some additional comments?
Yes, uh, thank you very much for, for, uh, having us here, and thanks for the commissioners and for the staff who provided a detailed, uh, report. I just want to highlight a few points here about the families, the question regarding the families. Yes, the majority of the families in the middle school are, will be students from the families that we currently have in the school that are, that they were with us in lower grades. For example, sixth graders will be the ones who will be in seventh grade this coming year. And we are hoping that, uh, this will get approved so we can start this fall. And regarding transportation, we do have school buses. We have four school buses and one minivan, and we also have a lot of students who are walkers. We have, um, I would say between 20 to 25 students who live very close to the school, and they do walk to the school. And I would be, um, more than happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rabia. Um, planning commission members, are there any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Corman, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So basically, uh, the expansion is because of the newcomer, not newcomers, but kindergarteners, correct? I mean, like younger siblings, if you're talking about, uh, if, if the middle school expansion for the middle school is because there's our students that are coming from the, uh, from the, the, um, from fifth grade, it's that, that means then that this increased enrollment has to do with, with the young kids, the younger siblings that are actually just coming into school. Am I correct?
That's, that's correct, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Cookton?
Uh, just want to clarify. Thank you, Mr. Chair. With the applicants, um, with there no being, uh, any students, additional students there on Friday, you, you mentioned that there would also be no additional staff on Friday. Just wanted to clarify that point.
What's the question again?
Uh, with the in- increase in, of, in enrollments, will there be any additional staff at the school on Friday?
There may be for planning purposes that we're talking about one or two teachers. Because currently our system is, we're, we're overstaffed for 130 students because we have single classrooms. So, um, teachers may come and do their distance learning or online part of from the school. We would not be able to tell them work from home because they need to make copies, they need to make, to use the computer and the internet. But all what we're talking about is about two individuals.
All right. Commissioner Roman, you have a question?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, wondering if, uh, someone from the applicant can speak to, uh, you know, and one of the things for the planning commission is we have to, again, as we did last time, this is a new conditional use permit. So while we are looking at the school having a larger occupancy, we're, um, to look at the entire use of the site, uh, beyond even the school. In, uh, 2018, I recall, there was some conversation about, um, the staff or the leadership of the center trying to do some additional work to mitigate the amount of on-street parking, which often we understand is for convenience, not necessarily because of a lack of parking. Uh, and that was something we had heard from the community as an area of concern. So I'm wondering what, um, efforts have had happened in the past year and a half, two years to, uh, help reach out to the, the community who, uh, the members who, uh, participate in the activities at the center, and how, and how successful that has or hasn't been in mitigating the amount of street parking, uh, at the facility.
Uh, I cannot speak for, for this part. I can briefly say what I have seen, because this, this work is done, uh, by Al-Jazari Institute, who is the owner, but we are there as a tenant. Um, so what I see that they are doing, they have some volunteers, uh, standing outside in the parking lot, in the entrances of the parking lot, trying to control the traffic and guide the vehicles to go to the empty spots and avoid, uh, off-street parking as much as possible. And also that they do have two, uh, sessions on Friday to separate the, the traffic, or to reduce the traffic a little bit. But of course, they are better equipped to talk about this because I'm just witnessing that, uh, side of the operation.
And, Mr. Chairman, I see we do have Mohammed Omar on the call, so I will unmute him now. I think he might be able to respond to that.
Perfect.
Yeah, um, can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can.
I was talking, I didn't know I was muted. So I, um, yes, we, we did, uh, made, uh, a lot of, a lot of changes and making sure that, you know, in, on people who are parking off-street, and sometimes you could see some of the parking lots empty inside the major, a bigger, a bigger parking lot, and also in the back, you know, of the mall, of the center. So we do also hire and, uh, security that, uh, dedicated that day, just making sure that everybody, you know, uh, does avoid, like avoid to park on, you know, on the street, except few times that where the two, the two ceremonies that get closer. So some people might stay in the car where, where the other, when the other group of the first, uh, ceremony people are leaving, and that's the time sometimes they stand on the side of the street to wait when the, when other people vacated, the parking lot, they come in. So, and we're talking about in a time that maybe has been 20 minutes, all this is happening, like, you know, or 15 minutes, sometimes 10 minutes, when the first ceremony is ending, ending, and people are leaving the parking lot, and the second one, our people, this area of people are coming. So in that, what we did was, we kind of made sure that the time is very, you know, uh, we, we added another 10 more minutes. So, so the people, we only created minutes in between, now we added 10, 40 minutes, we made it 40 minutes. And we did a lot of related reduction of people parking on the street, and we're still working. And I, we, we hoping that people will eventually move into the inside parking lot and not use out, in our, our, our street parking.
Thank you, Mr. Omar. Um, Commissioner Roman, did you have another question?
Uh, no. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, one question I have, just to clarify things, um, this hybrid program for the sixth to eighth graders, um, so the 50 students on Fridays, um, would be taking their, um, distance learning from home. I know that, the reason I'm asking this question is, I know that this, uh, property is used in multiple different ways. There's a community center. So just making sure, or just questioning, um, that Friday session would be at home or at their respective, um, homes versus, uh, you know, within a community center or a different location that could, uh, impact traffic.
I guess, Commissioner, it, it is expected to be at the student, student stay-at-home, not to come to the school site.
Great, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant from the commissioners? All right, seeing none. Um, do we, I don't see that we have anybody right now from the public, um, but can you verify that?
Uh, Mr. Chair, we do have two that have, uh, now signed up.
Okay.
And we have a couple others on the line that I'll check in with as well. So let's start, uh, with Amina Adan. I will unmute you now.
Hello?
Yep, we're here.
We're getting some feedback. There might be a speaker on in the background.
Hello, I can't.
Can you turn the volume off on, uh, your computer or on TV?
Yes, I was on my computer, but I shut it off a little.
There we go, looks like it's gone away.
Uh, we cannot hear you now. All right, uh, let's come back to you in a little bit. I will.
Okay, who's the second?
The second, uh, individual that's registered is Ayesha Ali. So, uh, Ms. Ali, I will unmute you now. Can you hear us, Ms. Ali? Uh, this is the call and user beginning, uh, 612-244.
Yes, that's actually me, Amina Adan.
Okay, great. Thank you. You can, you can testify now.
Yeah, if you, if you could, just again, and I, for people testifying, name and address?
Name and address.
Yes, if you could just identify again your name and address, um, for the record.
Yes, hi, my name is Amina Adan. Um, I live, um, in Bloomington Avenue. Um, I want to speak about, as a parent of Success Academy, I'm speaking to show my strong support for the applicants for Success Academy to add a middle school program. Success Academy provides exponential services and resources for our community. I encourage you to approve the school's application. As the building is used to be a school for 450 students, the school did a traffic study that shows they did not exceed the allowed number of trips. My daughters attend Success Academy, and we love it here very much since it exceeds our past experience in every category we look for in a school. I believe this school provides a strong foundation for my child to be successful in the future. Success Academy gives my daughter, uh, daughters a sense of community and belonging. Please approve this application so that my daughters can receive the best possible education and reach their full potential by allowing them to continue attending their favorite school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any, any others, uh, Mr. Markergard?
All right, uh, this time, let's check in with Abdallah Farah. I will unmute you now, if, and see if you want to speak.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, my name is, uh, Abdallah Farah. I'm a parent and, uh, community leader here in Bloomington. Uh, thank you, uh, commissioners, uh, city staff for your, uh, well-presented, uh, you know, report and presentation. Uh, I support the application of Success Academy to add the middle school program, uh, because Success Academy, I understand, uh, provides, uh, you know, a great, you know, educational program here at, uh, our, the school here at, uh, Bloomington. And, uh, my kids had a wonderful experience here at Success Academy. They had teachers and staff that worked hard with them, and, uh, you know, the school, even though we had challenges with some people harassing our kids at the park, but, you know, they handled the situation very professionally. This past year, my first grader learned, uh, how to garden and do art, which she loves. My third grader learned how to ride bikes, so they connect kids to good, uh, programs and mentoring programs and so forth. Uh, I understand also some of the parents, uh, love the school and even they want to continue, uh, bringing their kids to Success Academy. And, uh, so I, I definitely encourage, because I understand even the traffic study that was done mainly highlighted, uh, Friday tra- traffic, and just listening to the presentation of what the Success Academy plans to do with the hybrid program, that would not add anything to the traffic, uh, you know, uh, thresholds. And so this is basically providing, uh, opportunities for the parents to continue this, uh, with great educational experience here in Bloomington and, uh, and, and, and grant this for them. So definitely, I encourage all of you guys to, uh, uh, you know, to give this application, uh, you know, uh, a go. Uh, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And do we have one more still?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, we have no other, uh, people on the line at this time. And I'll just, uh, verify with Mr. Pease, have you received any additional contact?
I have not. I don't know if you want to try that one that didn't work before again? Amina Adan, did we try her a second time?
Yeah, we concluded that was the same caller as the, uh, the dial-in number.
Correct.
She mentioned that was her name.
Correct. Yep. Okay. Seeing, uh,
There are no, there are no others.
There are no others. Okay, thank you, Mr. Pease. Uh, seeing no others from the public, do I have a motion from one of the commissioners to close the public hearing? Commissioner Roman?
So moved.
All right, Commissioner Roman with a motion. Commissioner Goldsman?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Goldsman with a second. All those in favor, um, say aye or nay when called upon. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Corman?
Aye.
Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton?
Aye.
All right, and an aye for myself. The public hearing is now closed. Is there discussion by planning commission members on this item before us? I will start. Um, waiting for you guys to gather your thoughts. So, uh, I, along with a couple of you others, uh, the planning commission members was on the, the commission back in 2018, um, when the expansion, the first expansion came before us. And I do recall that the, the discussion really did center an awful And I do recall that the, the discussion really did center an awful lot around, uh, traffic issues. Um, and one of the main things being, uh, that the traffic, uh, study was done and that the, uh, school, uh, was under those standards. And that was really what we, we, uh, dug in deep on. And again, here we have an update of that. And the additional fifty students, while some of the Monday through Thursday, uh, add some additional students. It was really the Friday that was close to the threshold. And again, that threshold is really a level to which we're looking at for impact in the neighborhood. Um, so when we talk about this particular application, um, certainly traffic, uh, is a major issue. But I think, um, based on that twenty eighteen application, and again, now here today, they are meeting the standards on that. Um, and then additionally, we look at, I look at what have they done to mitigate that? And they did all the mitigation, uh, that was requested of them and, uh, required of them back in twenty eighteen. And they've done some additional work, um, is what I've heard. Now, I also understand, um, residents in the neighborhood, uh, do have concerns. And that's something why we have these standards to be, uh, reviewed. And are they reasonable for a residential area? Um, I have some of the same levels of traffic in my neighborhood, um, and certainly understand that. So, um, but again, I think the thresholds are not being met and therefore I can, uh, support the application. I certainly, um, look forward to the fact that the, uh, facility is going to be able to have an additional fifty students, um, another option in our community. Um, as you heard from the, um, school, I think, again, one of the elements that I, I worry about is just the safety of students. And we talked about that with the mitigation that was previously included. And now hearing from them that I think there's additional busing that there was back in twenty eighteen. Um, I don't recall that from the previous discussion. So, um, I, I will be in support of the application. It really, um, meets the, the test for me. So, um, with that, we'll go to Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just want to echo your comments regarding the traffic counts, um, in being within that, that threshold. Uh, I am going to be in support of this moving forward. Um, I appreciate, uh, the option for Bloomington residents. And, uh, particularly around, um, STEM education. I think this is a, a, a strong, um, asset to the city of Bloomington. So, uh, I appreciate the, the application. And, and I also want to mention, um, big thank you to Bloomington staff for working regarding some of the mitigation that, that did happen regarding circulation, et cetera, to make things safe. Um, and, uh, as I said before, I, I am in full support.
Thank you, Commissioner Albrecht. Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yes, I think the specific increase here that's proposed and the fact that it's limited to Monday through Thursday, uh, and it's during school hours, I think are factors that we need to be able to support this. Um, some of the things that we've heard from in the past, especially in the twenty eighteen proposal, um, was specifically regarding levels of traffic on Friday. This proposal, I think, helps to eliminate the additional traffic by not having enforcement education on Fridays. Um, and then also, the daytime hours of school, uh, also are a mitigating factor for some of the other concerns that I believe we saw in some of the public comments about late night usage. So for those reasons, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. One thing I, I, I recognize the unique nature of the situation we're in with the pandemic. And it's not a reason to pull approval of this. Um, but because this is a new conditional use permit, I, I think it would just, I know we did a lot of mitigation. We required a lot of mitigation last time. Those things were put in place. It really would have been nice to be able to test if those actually were effective, if the numbers were such, if the impact was different. Uh, third-party, uh, non-bias, whether you're, uh, from the neighborhood or whether you're from the, um, community center. But absent good data, one way or the other, on that, I'm left to, um, act based on the information presented to us. And so, uh, I am in support of this application.
Thank you, Commissioner Roman. Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm not going to restate a lot of the things that the other commissioners have said. And, and I would, uh, agree with, uh, many of the statements. So I, I, the things that I can add here is, you know, participating in the original CUP in twenty eighteen. I, we remember we talked a lot about mitigations and we had, um, some discussions on contingency plans, et cetera. And I was really happy to see that those were all implemented and then some. Um, you know, we're looking at standards and how those standards apply to the current situation. Um, and based on, you know, facts and what's been presented, I think that the applicant has done some really creative thinking, um, especially with this hybrid program and the current state of the world and where we're going, to being more online, more, um, digital is, is really commendable. So, um, I, I really in favor of that. And I, I also want to just, uh, kind of reflect on, on the meeting that we had in twenty eighteen. And because this site is not on a collector road, it, it comes with having a couple of different situations that are unique to the site. Uh, I think a lot of, um, the contention or the concern from residents is really because this is in the middle of the neighborhood. It's not on a collector road, um, like we would see in, in most, um, more modern, um, type of buildings or projects. So, uh, for them to use an existing site and really invest in the, in the community and the school, and then also do the mitigations, I think it's, it's a great project. So, um, I'm in support and I thi- I think that they've done a, a nice job of, of working creatively to come up with a solution for their, uh, community as well as, uh, the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Goldsman. Um, any other comments from any of the commissioners? I'll just add one point, and I think Commissioner, um, Roman, maybe, uh, I don't necessarily think you meant it this way. Um, but I do think the, the traffic, uh, study that was done at the age, and I know it is pretty much, uh, industry standard of three years or less. And since there has not been significant, uh, growth or change over in uses in the neighborhood, I think the, the traffic data, uh, is good. And I just wanted to make that clear from my perspective. I understand, um, yours, Commissioner Roman, that it isn't the most recent traffic counts. Um, but I think the traffic model is, is very good, so.
Mr. Chair, I didn't mean to suggest that the information was inaccurate. I just was, uh, would have liked to have the opportunity to validate the assumptions in that original.
Yes, uh, understood. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. All right, uh, any other comments from the, uh, planning commission? If not, I would look for a motion. Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Make a motion.
Go ahead.
In case PL two zero two zero dash nine eight, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend approval of a conditional use permit to increase the maximum student enrollment from a hundred and thirty students to a hundred and eighty students through a hybrid educational program and to construct a greenhouse addition to an existing pre-K through eighth grade school located at eight two zero one Park Avenue South, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Thank you. Commissioner Albrecht?
Second.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye when called upon. All right, Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Corman?
Aye.
Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookdon?
Aye.
And myself is an aye. Um, that motion that, uh, moves forward to the.
One more, uh.
Nope, sorry.
Item.
Yep. All right, do we have a motion for the, or, uh, do we have somebody to make a second motion? Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In case PL two zero two zero dash nine eight, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend approval of a major revision to final development plans to construct an approximately nine hundred square foot greenhouse addition at an existing pre-K eight grade school located at eight two zero one Park Avenue South, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
All right, and a second, Commissioner Albrecht?
Second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor say aye. Called upon, Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Corman?
Aye.
Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookdon?
Aye.
And aye for myself. Those two, uh, passed with unanimous votes. Therefore, this item will move to the August third city council meeting as a consent item. And, uh, that concludes item number one. Item number two tonight, Rosa Development, Mr. Centenario, um, will you give us a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll echo, uh, Mr. Johnson's sentiment, uh, welcome to our, uh, planning commissioners. And thank you for your service and, and we look forward to working with you. Uh, my name is Mike Centenario. I'm another one of the planners on staff. And the second item on your agenda, uh, again, won't be new to, to the folks that have been on the commission for a couple of years. Uh, but, uh, we're looking at, uh, interim use permits for the Park and Fly Remote Airport Parking, uh, Facility. Uh, it's actually made up of two sites, uh, thirty seven hundred and thirty seven fifty American Boulevard East. As part of those, uh, of the application, uh, and I'll get into more detail, uh, but the applicant is looking to extend, uh, previously approved interim use permits by a year. And then as part of that application to modify, uh, some development milestones that were established, uh, last year. So here's the, here's the site, uh, that we're reviewing tonight. Again, this is the, the Park and Fly Remote Airport Parking Facility. And, uh, so obviously this, this is very close to the airport, as you'd imagine. And, uh, nearby the west of the site is Thirty Fourth Avenue South, which of course is where the LRT is located. Uh, to the south, uh, immediately buttoning the size of American Boulevard. And then to the east, you have, uh, the Wildlife Refuge. And so again, uh, the Park and Fly Facility is made up of two properties, thirty seven hundred and thirty seven fifty, and two separate interim use permits, uh, or IUPs. And so an IUP was established for thirty seven fifty, which is a parking, predominantly a parking structure, and then a separate, uh, I, interim use permit or IUP for thirty seven hundred. And both of those IUPs are set to terminate, uh, July of twenty twenty four. Uh, the applicant would like to, to, to establish new IUPs and, uh, set the expiration date one year later to July first, twenty twenty five. It's a slightly different view of the, uh, Park and Fly Facility. So again, you have the, the structured parking, which is about a thousand stalls. And then you have the surface lot, uh, which is just a, a, a little bit, uh, more, uh, more stall. So in total, a little over two thousand, uh, parking stalls for this whole facility. And in terms of the, the use, uh, remote airport parking, it was, uh, always intended to be, uh, a holding use, if you will. Uh, then the intent was to allow, uh, a use on the property while other, uh, land was being, uh, redeveloped. And the intent all along was for it to redevelop at some point, um, to, uh, a non, uh, parking, parking storage type use. And, uh, that's, that's really what we've been trying to, uh, to do with last year's interim use permit, uh, by establishing development milestones. Uh, because we understand when you have a, a twelve acre site like this, uh, it's not all going to develop at once. And so we want, we wanted to establish, uh, development milestones that led towards the phased, uh, implementation of, of permanent development. And so when we're reviewing interim use permits, there, there's the purpose statements, uh, and this is directly out of the city code. Uh, there's several, uh, purpose statements. And one I highlighted is to ensure that temporary uses remain temporary in nature. And one of, one of the, uh, facts on this site is that, uh, this was originally approved in nineteen eighty-eight. So the, the, the site has, uh, been used for remote airport parking for a little over thirty years at this point. And, uh, temporary conditional use permits and interim use permits were approved, um, multiple times, as you, as you saw on the staff report. And we felt for a number of reasons that, uh, now is a good, a good time to, to start, um, ensuring that phased development happened. And then related to interim use permit findings, in order to approve an interim use permit, uh, the planning commission, the city council need to make certain findings. And for, uh, i- in, it's a little tricky in terms of how we, uh, structured the report and our recommendation. Uh, but for related to the changes to development milestones, um, which again, I'll, I'll get detailed a little bit, we felt the findings were met. However, uh, we did not believe the findings were met for, uh, the one-year, uh, extension of, or to, for new interim use permits to twenty twenty-five. And so to, to provide a little more detail on the development milestones that were approved in the twenty nineteen interim use permit, these are not all of developed milestones, but I just wanted to, to provide a good selection. There are other milestones related to, um, like a pro forma, uh, financial assistance requests, um, as well as preliminary final plat. But in terms of the zoning entitlements, uh, back in August of twenty nineteen, they were to, uh, provide a identification of a project site for phase one. And then, uh, end of October to identify at least a conceptual master site plan. Or in terms of this, the City of Bloomington zoning code, we call that a preliminary development plan or a PDP. And by the end of the year, they were to submit a phase one or a PDP and a final development plan application or a site plan application for phase one. And though, and the applicant, uh, completed those tasks. And, uh, April this year, they received approval, uh, for a, uh, multi-phase PDP and approval for, uh, phase one, uh, which is, uh, intended to be a hundred and eighty-three unit, a six-story apartment building. So where they're seeking some more time, uh, and again, uh, we're, we're seeing a lot of impact, uh, due to, to the pandemic, uh, the economy generally, but then more specifically in the real estate, uh, field. Uh, there has been tremendous challenges, of course. And the applicant is seeking an additional year, uh, for certain development milestones. And what those are, by June first of this year, they were, uh, to submit a permit application for construction of phase one. Uh, that, th- they weren't able to, to do that, uh, due to, uh, complications of the pandemic. By September first of this year, they were to commence construction, uh, of phase one. Uh, obviously that, that's not a possibility at this point. And then by July first of twenty twenty-two, they were to submit a conceptual plan for phase two. The idea there is, uh, phase one, uh, would be well under construction, uh, maybe even complete. And they'd have a good idea of what, what could be supported by the market, uh, what sort of, uh, financial incentives a city may or may not be able to provide, and essentially what, what would be the best fit for the site. Uh, I do, we have, we'd be con- consistent with the preliminary development plan. Uh, but those phases in the PDP, uh, they, they always, uh, evolve over time. So to provide a, a little bit of background, uh, for the commissioners, again, this is a, a general graphic of the PDP that we have, uh, for the Park and Fly site. And on the southwest corner, you'll see phase one. That's the apartment building and I have, and I have a rendering that can show. But then there's also, uh, phase two, three, and four. And then thirty seven fifty, the parking structure is, is really identified as a future phase. Uh, essentially the last, uh, the last portion of the site to, to redevelop, uh, is something else. As part of PDPs, we do require that they provide at least some level of three-dimensional, uh, graphics for the entire site. So you see phase one, which has a, a lot of detail, uh, they're looking to build that. But then for the future phases, they really just have massing graphics to kind of give you a flavor for what, uh, for what the intensity would be, uh, on the site. Again, it's a twelve, it's a twelve acre property, so this is, this is a really large site, very impactful, and, uh, can have quite a bit of development on it. And refresh the folks' memory, or if you haven't seen this graphic before, this is a, a three-dimensional architect's drawing for the phase one site. And refresh the folks' memory, or if you haven't seen this graphic before, this is a a three-dimensional architect's drawing for the phase one site. This is looking from American Boulevard towards phase one. And so we're really excited about phase one, we think uh the applicant uh did a fantastic job with the design, uh they they were a pleasure to work with. And uh we're we're really eager to to for phase one to move forward. Uh that being said, so we do not believe that uh extending an interim use permit from twenty twenty four, the current. Uh termination to twenty twenty five is warranted, and I'll provide a little more detail on that. But we do believe that the findings are met for the milestone revisions, uh the the pandemic isn't something that the applicant can control. Uh and the challenges that are uh we're seeing throughout throughout the economy. Uh we think it is, it is perfectly reasonable and appropriate uh to provide some additional flexibility on those milestones. So for the I U P time extensions, and again, this this is to uh. Extend the I U P termination for remote airport parking from July first, twenty twenty four to July first, twenty twenty five. Uh staff does not believe it meets uh three of the findings for interim use permits. One being that uh we believe that uh a one-year extension would incrementally delay permit development. Uh it also increases uncertainty for permanent development. Uh the second finding, uh would not adversely impact implementation of the comprehensive plan. Or did adopted district plan, in this case, that's the South Loop District Plan. Uh and we believe it 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 is in conflict uh with the comprehensive plan and the South Loop District Plan's long-term vision. Uh this is really where we anticipate and require the most intense development, uh transit-supporting development. And uh we feel that uh delaying that. Uh without any uh movement or completion of phase one, as well as an understanding. For how uh the pandemic will will play out, frankly, uh isn't warranted. And then uh the third finding, we did not believe it met was the data event uh will terminate uh with with certainty. Again, without progress on the future phases, uh in the form of a completed phase one development, uh we do not believe. Uh that that standard uh is met and that the rem- remote airport parking will terminate in a timely phase manner. So the 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 tricky part for staff was to craft a recommendation uh that it is a. Was what we call a partial approval and partial denial. We're in support of uh some of the elements proposed by the applicant. Uh changing those development milestones, we think that is appropriate and warranted. Uh but we are not in support of uh extending the termination dates for the two I U Ps. From twenty twenty four uh to twenty twenty five. And again, the main reasons are are really, we we want to see uh phase one implemented of. What we want to see progress towards the phase two. And and frankly, the the I U P still have just about four years left. Uh till twenty twenty four, and by that time, I'd like to think that uh we'll have a pretty good handle on what the market can support and what the long-term implications of the of the pandemic are. And uh the city council, as twenty twenty four approaches, they will have the ability uh to. Extend the I U P at a later date, uh should the applicant apply for that extension. Um so I do have uh the recommo- recommended motion before you, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Centenario, um can, yeah, can you just quickly, again, do the the timelines there? Um for the current project that's in front of us, um. Wanted to just review that, so by twenty July first of twenty twenty two, and they're seeking an extension to that. To develop plans for phase two and phase two being, um I think you showed a um graphic for that. That was the, I think it was just north of this first one, is that correct?
Oh, sure. This the, was this graphic, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, yes, thank you. So that is through twenty twenty two, that takes it into phase two. I don't recall, was there in those conditions for a phase three and four as well timeline?
Uh Mr. Chair, uh there wasn't, um so we were very much focused on. Uh phase one, uh trying to get a physical develop, permanent development uh on the site. And then setting the stage for phase two. Uh so we left it at uh providing a conceptual plan for phase two. We did not establish development milestones beyond that. The thought is, you know, the the market could shift, uh as it always will, will do, and they may want to amend the PDP to to meet market uh conditions. But we at least wanted to to require the planning, uh them to begin planning for phase two. And then we would assess uh future phases uh at that time.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Um Commissioner Goldsman, you have a question?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair, so uh the question for Mr. Centenario is really around that timeline. Can you walk us through, I see that the timeline of June first is obviously come and gone. What's the type of communication, um you know? The the um response to, you know, missing this timeline from the applicant to the to the city staff?
Sure, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. I I would say that the applicant has been in communication with the city. Uh throughout this entire process, uh from twenty nineteen, working towards uh an interim use permit. Uh application last year uh through today. Uh they have been very much uh communicating well with the city. And, you know, ultimately, there's um. You know, there was communication on, you know, what what next, what should we do next, you know, we're not going to be able to meet this June first deadline, what do we need to do? And so staff did work with the applicant and their representative uh to uh figure out, well, what? What application uh should they consider submitting? And, you know, I I think there was a little bit of a wait-and-see approach of, you know, June first, that. That's really not that uh much into that far along into the pandemic, so there's a lot, tremendous amount of uncertainty in April and May. And then to try and submit a permit application uh with how much time it takes to produce construction uh documents. Uh that that just wasn't a a possibility, uh but I I I can confirm that the applicant has been in communication with the city staff all along.
Okay, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um I just want to follow up on a. Just Centenario, that the answer you gave to um Chair Stolberg's question, you mentioned assessing the market. Um regarding future phases, can you just elaborate on on that just a little bit about what that means? Based on the city's approach to assess the market given timelines for future phases?
Sure, you know, I think it's more, it's a really a general statement on uh what sort of land uses do we think uh both. Are uh acceptable from a market perspective that are financeable. Uh but then also further uh the uh comprehensive plan and South of District Plan. Uh because it really has to be both, uh it's something that the market can support. Uh from a financial standpoint, to see that something can actually be financed and built. Uh but that we also want to always keep uh in mind and review uh that phase with consistency to our uh long-range plans. And so we have certain density requirements, uh uh certain design requirements that uh for. Um for a few, all phases, and so, you know, it's more of just a a general statement uh related to, you know, a a detailed analysis on what. Uh we think is the best uh land use and uh development possible.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
I, if I, so just to follow up on that, has the city done any analysis on this? Uh on the assessment of the market given COVID conditions? And potentially? What that might be within the next five to ten years?
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner, you know, I I can, there hasn't been a, you know, a robust uh market study um. As what, as I know of, for like the South of District. Uh but there are staff at the city that that do keep uh. Uh detailed records on, for example, uh hotel occupancy. Um because obviously, the City Bloomington has had a very robust uh hotel development market for the past five-plus years. That's going to be severely impacted, uh it has been, uh but then we'll want to keep a close eye on how that changes over time. Uh because occupancy right now is not at a level that can sustain uh contain these businesses. So knowing that, probably unlikely, for example, that a new hotel is going to be uh developed within this area. For the foreseeable future. However, housing seems to be uh still a very viable and needed uh development or land use. And so trying to analyze, well, what are occupancy rates uh for housing, uh what are, what are the rental rates? Uh are people, is there still development pressure for for multifamily housing? Uh what what is the level of uh acceptance of mixed use, amount of retail that might be appropriate to support? Uh the increased number of dwelling units in the South of District. Uh but then especially related specifically to the remote airport parking use. Uh one central feature is, well, what is the demand for remote airport parking? And we do have recent data that uh at the airport. Uh demand for their parking is no more than ten percent of capacity. Um and that that that'll change, of course, but it is, that's a pretty tremendous figure. That of the twenty seven thousand parking stalls, only about ten percent are being used uh on a given day. So the demand for on-airport parking is severely down, and I think it's fair to assume that the demand for remote airport parking is also severely down. So we also want to be mindful of of that, um because. If that become, if it's no longer a viable business model, maybe the uh the phasing changes over time. Uh but we just, we just don't know yet how that's going to play out.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, any additional questions for? Mr. Centenario. Alright, um none at this time. We can, Mr. Markergard is the applicant available?
Yes, uh Mr. Chair, I am making them panelists now, and Mr. Griffith, I believe you can unmute yourself.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh can you hear me alright?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Uh Bill Griffith, uh I've got a fan above my head there, so uh sorry about that distraction. Uh thank you for this opportunity to address you. I will um wrap up with some comments, uh Kristen Muir is also on the line, she's the developer. And Julie Kimball is her development consultant, who's worked with her throughout the process. So um uh both may have comments, I know Kristen Muir will have opening comments, and then I would like to address the findings. Um for the application, so with that, if Kristen's available, I would uh turn it over to her.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Go ahead, Kristen. Not hearing anything yet?
Why don't I get started, and then if Kristen can uh join me on the line, um we'll, we'll turn it over to her. Um I, we, we discussed the presentation, so I understand uh what she wanted to address, and I. I think the first point is a, is a really important one, and and Mr. Centenario addressed it. There's been a very good collaboration over the last eighteen months uh between the developer. The developers consultant and city staff, and that's resulted in a fully entitled project um on this site. And we're very excited about that, in fact, we just got through the Port Authority process on the development agreement. And so that is uh also in place. And so we've got a project that uh but for the pandemic. Uh really was shovel-ready and would be shovel-ready in the timeframe anticipated. And and that's a very positive outcome, as both sides, uh both parties have. Um we're, you know, we're really working together to try and and accomplish what Mr. Centenario pointed out in terms of the comprehensive plan. And the redevelopment of the site and the phase out of remote airport parking. So uh and and the and the extension really, um in both cases, for the milestones and for the interim use permits, is is fairly modest, it's one year. I don't think anybody expects it will be back to normal in a year. Uh but it's very likely that this project could move forward in that timeframe, because it is fully entitled and and in a uh. In a spot within the city that has seen a great deal of interest in multifamily housing. Uh but still, it it is with some, some risk, and so that's why. Um the applicant proposed also that we extend the interim use permit uh by one year. And uh for both sites, and that really does a couple of things, and I'll, and I'll respond in connection with the findings if Mr. Centenario uh could put them up on the screen. I'd like to address uh the the critical findings that staff was not able to make. And and address them in the context of the the one-year extension of of both the milestones and the permit. And if you think about what's occurred in the last eighteen months, the developer. Uh using those parking resources, uh basically said to the owner-investors, uh you're not going to receive anything um from these operations now. For the foreseeable future, because those very same funds are going to go into the redevelopment of this site. And so literally hundreds of thousands of dollars have been spent on consultants, engineers, architects. To not only design phase one, but uh to give the city the view of the master plan that Mr. Centenario went through. And so those parking operations have been the key to be able to fund the development um. And planning process that's gone on for the last eighteen months. And now enter the pandemic, and you can drive by the site and see there's, you know, activity is is greatly reduced. Down significantly, also as uh planning staff has outlined. And so we really view the the parking operations and the parking revenues and the redevelopment. Of the site as kind of hand and glove. And one thing I wanted to point out, in one of the early slides, you saw the Embassy Suites uh site on the west. And you saw the Hilton site on the east. And then you saw this Park and Fly, or the Park and Fly Remote Airport Parking in the center. And so I want to put this in the context of the nineteen eighties development approvals that occurred. In fact, development did occur, this was part of a large master plan development that actually even included a convention center, which ultimately went downtown. But it was part of a large master plan, and two ends of that master plan uh were developed, and then the market changed. And so always the the intention of the owners was to redevelop this site. And those parking revenues are really key to that opportunity as we look to the 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 next couple of years. And so we look at those parking revenues as creating certainty, not creating uncertainty. What they do is they they allow the um owner-developers to continue to fund um development opportunities and. And operations, at the same time, hopefully, the the uh, you know, business travel and leisure travel rebounds. So I'm going to just walk through, now that you have the concept, at least from our our standpoint, I want to walk through the uh the findings. So the proposed use will not delay permanently, permanently uh delay development of the site. A one-year extension under the existing conditions will not permanently delay development. In fact, if you look at the other conditions, the developer has to meet the milestones. Within the four-to-five-year window that we're talking about. So the developer can't sit still and and continue to have remote airport parking rights. So to add one year to the interim use permit does not permanently delay development. Um the proposed use will not adversely impact implementation of the comprehensive plan or adopted district plan. In fact, what we now have is a framework that fits very, very nicely into that comprehensive plan and that district plan. And if you, if you go back into the details, and I won't go into all of them, but it's actually transit uh oriented. It meets your housing, your affordable high housing goals, it provides green space. And so it fits very nicely, and and I could go on, but uh staff has been very complimentary of the project, so I won't. But it fits very, very nicely into that district plan and into that comprehensive plan. And so again, a one-year addition, which provides parking revenues, which funds redevelopment, actually is consistent with that plan. And then finally, the, I think the easiest one to make is the last one, the data event that will terminate the use has been identified with certainty. By moving it one year, we still know with certainty when that permit terminates. And so I think that one is is relatively easy to make, because of the extension is a one-year to a date certain. We have been on the same page with staff throughout this process, and and I'm grateful for that, and I'm grateful for all their support. I I just don't see this one-year extension of the interim use permit as a significant um slowdown in the redevelopment process. In fact, as I've stated, it funds the redevelopment process, and it does so with certainty. In a time when the city council has looked at ways to lessen the burden of this pandemic. This is a very easy way, at least in our view, a very simple way to do that, create certainty for the owner. Create certainty for the owners that their parking operations will continue through that one-year extension. And then we can continue to get to the business of the redevelopment plan. With that, I'm going to just see if Kristen Muir is able to come on the line and if she would like to add anything at this time. Okay, it seems like that she's having difficulty. I know she, she wanted to thank the city for the, the efforts over the last 18 months. And, and just really give you a feel for, oh, here she is. I see that she's on the line.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay, great. I don't know what was, I was trying to use my headphones, but it was not working. Anyway. Thank you all commissioners and city staff for, you know, all the time and energy that we've had and, in this project. You know, I actually wanted to echo some of Bill's thoughts. This, you know, the, the partners have not, you know, been receiving distributions. All of the cash that we've had, you know, in the past year has been going to fuel development and, you know, keep up with our property taxes, which actually are all current. And things were actually going along fine until, you know, March. And as you may imagine, it's just, everything more or less just fell off a cliff. And for the first time ever, we actually had to, Rosa actually had to reimburse Park and Fly just to keep the lights on and the salaries and, you know, the vans gassed and all of that because there was just simply no travel. So, you know, spring is typically our best time of the year, March, April and May. And, and this year, you know, it was just completely negative. So it is going to take time to recoup some of those losses. And, but, but really, it's, you know, I don't, I don't feel like, I'm, I feel like I am asking more a little bit for flexibility for the later phases. You know, Phase One is definitely going to be happening within this, this timeframe. But, you know, we, we want to work with you and we want to build a project that we can all be proud of and show your vision for this district really come to fruition. We have been working hard. I've hired Julie Kimball, who you know. I've had countless meetings with Glenn and Mike and the people at Port Authority. And, you know, Bill has done a fantastic job. And I was actually coming up to Minneapolis often for meetings and then, you know, everything basically ceased in March. And so I, I feel like we are just asking for some flexibility, more for Phase Two and so that we can continue to, to, you know, carry on that modern aesthetically pleasing project that you saw some slides of. Also financing projects of this magnitude, as you have imagined, have tightened recently. You know, banks, I feel, are definitely more nervous than they were before. So any additional revenue stream looks very beneficial to lenders and would help also that process immensely. And just in closing, if we've learned anything at all from the past few months, it's that you cannot predict exactly what's going to happen and there is much uncertainty. So time to pivot and flexibility are the tools that really can combat challenging times. And, and that flexibility is really what we're requesting from the commission. So I just wanted to thank you all.
Thank you. If I could, I, I just, I have a question to follow up for either Mr. Griffith or Kristen Muir. So understanding you're on pace with, or seem to be agreeable to the modification to the timelines. I'm trying to understand what is the motivation for a longer extension? If the development timelines remain or would, would push back one year? What, what, what does that benefit to the, to you as the applicant?
It would definitely make, I believe, financing the projects easier because any, any sort of revenue, you know, banks would like to see that. It looks, it looks much better. It would also give us time to have another year to build up reserves to fund Phase Two and finish off Phase One. So, you know, this is a pretty tight project with the returns. The city has been great working with us. But still, it is very costly to build, you know, a, a quality, a high-quality building that we all would like to see there. And so, so really, the parking revenue is in a way, you know, feeding this redevelopment. And, and so any additional funds is obviously, is very helpful to, to use in a multi-phase, you know, 12, 12-acre big project like we are talking about here.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I think that answers my question. Are there any commissioners that have questions for the applicant? Seeing none, does the applicant, do you have any final thoughts?
Mr. Chair and commissioners, just, I want to reiterate the, the cooperative nature of the, the project and, and this request. I, I, I don't think that we're far off. The, the staff was very supportive and understood that the milestone should move a year, given the pandemic. And we just thought it was very sensible that, that all of the dates would move one year. And we didn't ask for three and we didn't ask for five. We simply asked for a 12-month extension all the way around. So thank you for your consideration and we appreciate your support.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Markergard, do we have anybody from the public for public hearing?
So, Mr. Chair, we did not have anybody sign up in advance and I do not see anybody on the attendee list. I will ask Mr. Pease just for confirmation that he's not heard from anyone.
I have nobody who called in at all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pease.
I have nobody who called in.
Thank you. Hearing that, fellow commission members, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Commissioner Roman?
So moved.
And do, is there a second? Commissioner Goldsman?
Second.
All right, thank you. Having a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Corman?
Aye.
Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookdon?
Aye.
Thank you. And that's an aye for me. That closes the public hearing. Discussion, commissioners? Is there any discussion on this application in front of us? Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that the staff has laid out all of the arguments for and against modifications to both the milestones and the IUP. I think it, nobody knows how long this current situation, you find yourselves in, will go for. So I, I am supportive of the milestone modification. And I am inclined to follow staff's recommendation only because I think it's entirely possible that we will need to, if, if things continue for quite a while and the market is impacted for a while, there may be even a need for longer than a year, which then would be a part of a future IUP. I think good faith effort is, is key here. And I think we've seen the applicant has made good faith effort. And I think if the applicant continues to make good faith effort on this project, I, I would, you know, imagine that future missions, whether some of us are, many of us are on that or not, would see that and acknowledge that, you know, something has happened along the way. So given how fresh this IUP is, I think I would be inclined to not extend that just given that the possibility of need to be longer going forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Roman. Commissioner Cookdon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did give this item a lot of thought. And the first thing I thought about a lot about was whether it was fair on the commission's part to make a set of required findings for Phase One, but not in turn make that same set of findings for the future phases, being that its pandemic would be the cause for both of those things. And for me, it came down to the outcome of the actions of both of those things. When, when we modify the development milestones for Phase One, we still are resulting in permanent development, development on this site, which is in accordance with the comp plan. When we extend the IUPs for the rest of the site, what we're ending up with is another year of airport parking, which does not conform to the comp plan. And so I too am able to make the required findings for modifying the development milestones. However, I do struggle, as does the city, city staff recommendation, to make the required findings for continuing the IUPs for the, the rest of the site.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners with thoughts on this application? All right, well, I'll, I'll talk here a little bit. So I struggle a little bit with this. Certainly COVID-19 is like nothing we have experienced in our lifetime and has changed the dynamic for the way we do business. So certainly when we look at the modification to developing the timelines, I can understand and agree with the planning staff's requirements. The time extensions is where I question this to, and I guess throw this out to the rest of the planning commission, understanding the two previous commissioners. And I, and I'm trying to understand how a pandemic and the issues that it is causing across our, our world really shouldn't be thought of when we think about the development of these properties. I, I certainly can see the point of our previous commissioners of, yes, that permanently delays. So finding number one, it, it does give that permission to delay development on the site. Yet on the other hand, there's, there's not a guarantee that it will take place because of this. Now, I, as I think about this, there's the other side of this is that they can apply at a later time. If I'm correct, Mr. Markergard, for an extension, is that correct?
That's correct.
So now we're back to, they still have, the applicant still has options. And one of the reasons I asked the applicant why the request for the extension was because what is, what are they looking for? And it really does become, to some degree, a mode to further ensure development because they have income moving forward in the short term rather than, you know, it would end in a year later. They would have potentially four years of income or five years of income rather than four. So I am still undecided on this one. I'd be very interested in hearing again from other commissioners. Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I think I, I echo what has been said prior. One of the things that I look at is, you know, I, I understand that we're, we're going to be delayed in, in the development. I also want to make sure that we're flexible with these types of developments as well as understanding the safety that comes along with it. If we rush it through, you know, thinking about the current pandemic and the people that are going to be involved with this project, without knowing when there is going to be viable treatments or vaccines, we have to take into account the public safety as well. So I think allowing that extension for the Phase One is, is a justifiable prudent decision and, and from safety as well as financing makes sense. And then I, I think the long-term, you know, Phase Two, et cetera. If, if things come faster and we are able to open things up and have safe working environments, et cetera, we can continue down the path or in a, in a few months, if we know it's not viable, they can come back and ask for that extension. And, and I think based on the interactions with the staff as well as the applicant, I would be amenable to that as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Goldsman. Any, any other comments by commissioners? Commissioner Corman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would also echo the same, the, the same thought of, you know, the uncertainty of this time and without knowing for sure what could happen in, in the following months and in the way that it would affect not only the projects but also the community and even the, the plans that the community might have in the future too. I would follow that recommendation as well, recommendation of staff.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, having listened to some of this conversation, it raised a question for me, you know, one of the, one of the reasons that the applicant has asked for to want the IUP extended, from a revenue perspective. Nobody knows if or when revenue for this type of use is going to rebound. Even if things become somewhat abnormal, I think people in the aviation industry, what I read, they're expecting 2023 or later before things return to 2019 levels. And so is the difference between four and five years significant from a revenue perspective? Or is, you know, now is a good time to be borrowing money with interest rates low? I'm not a business person and I am not a banker. But I don't think there's any guarantees that another year on IUP will provide sufficient revenue such that would make a difference in the viability of the project. I think the revenue is, is certainly helpful. It leads the applicant to perhaps borrow less money. But the project, I think, will stand on its own regardless of the amount of revenue that comes from a, of the Park and Fly function. And so I'm inclined to stick with my original thought, which is give them more time to work with them, the parameters that we originally gave them, with the end date or meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Roman. Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I was having very similar thoughts to Commissioner Roman's remarks. So thanks for starting that out. I, you know, I think that the revenue is a big question mark. And I, a couple of things. You know, I do agree with the applicant's perspective in that, you know, now is the time to be nimble and, and sort of creative. But from my perspective, not quite yet. I don't think we're at that point yet, at least for this project. And I think that, and I, I guess I would encourage the applicant, you know, if something changes and there is, you know, financial hardship that in which where, you know, the project cannot get done if not for, then, you know, I would encourage them to have additional conversations. Because I, at, at this point, we don't know. And therefore, at least from my perspective and, and the way that I'll be, you know, voting tonight is, I can improve or I can support the extension, you know, on the, on the actual project, but not for the IUP.
Thank you, Commissioner Albrecht. Any additional comments from any of the commission members? I think just, I, I appreciate the commission members discussing their thoughts. I think that's given me some additional confidence, especially the fact that they can apply for an extension later on down the road. I think to Commissioner Albrecht, I think your point hit home with me is, yes, there may be a need, but right now, we don't know and we don't know what it looks like six months from now or nine months from now. And the flexibility is there. Certainly, it sounds like it's been a Certainly, it sounds like it's been a productive relationship for both parties and hopefully that would continue. So I think at that point, what I'm saying is I can support the staff recommendations on both of these. And if I don't see a hand raised, I would look for a motion from one of the planning commission members. Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
In case PL 2020-102, having been unable to make the required findings 1, 2, and 5, City Code Section 21.501E, I move to recommend approval of an interim use permanent permit with modifications to previously adopted development milestones for phase development, but denial of an extended expiration date at 3700 American Boulevard E, subject to the listed conditions of approval and denial of an interim use permit with a new expiration date at 3750 American Boulevard.
Thank you. And a second, Commissioner Corman.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in front of us and a second. All those in favor say aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman.
Aye.
Commissioner Corman.
Aye.
Commissioner Roman.
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi.
Aye.
Commissioner Cookdon.
Aye.
And myself as an aye. That motion moves forward to the city council meeting on August 3rd as a consent agenda item. And that concludes item number two for the evening. Item number three, Mr. Schmidt, will you please present your report?
I will. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead. We can see it.
All right. Sorry about that.
There you go.
So tonight, so introductions. I am Jason Schmidt. I am one of the economic development analysts for the Port Authority. And tonight, I am before you on a proposed tax increment financing district to be created for the American Square Development. Just a quick overview of what tax increment financing is for the commissioners. It is a method of capturing a tax-based growth resulting from new development. In essence, we're capturing that increment to pay for public costs and TIF eligible costs related to development. I like to use this screenshot here as an example of how this actually works in practice. So what we do is initially, we take the base value of what the property is today or prior to the TIF district being created. And that base value is then set during the term of the TIF. The developer continues to pay taxes on the total property value and then taxes that are collected on that base value get paid to all of these taxing jurisdictions based on their approved rates. Any new increment from development that occurs after the TIF district is created is what gets captured to help pay back for TIF eligible costs of the project. And so that hundred percent proceeds that are pooled or collected during the TIF, TIF district period, either go to the, to the specified project or they get, continue to get pooled by the city or Port Authority for other projects that meet the TIF requirements. Once the TIF district is terminated, so at this point here, at that time, then, all of the increments in taxes collected then get dispersed to all of the taxing jurisdictions. And so why I'm here to be for you today is pursuant to the state statutes, the city needs to make certain findings that include the following. That the TIF, that the TIF district qualifies as a housing district, which this TIF district will be a housing district for this development, that the proposed development in the opinion, opinion of the city would not occur but for this assistance. It's called the but-for test. That the city is getting the maximum opportunity consistent with the whole development of the city and the project area. And then lastly, what the planning commission is actually going to act on today is, does the TIF plan conform to the general plans for development or the Forward 2040 comprehensive plan? So the American Square Development, so back in June, this was before the planning commission. So I understand a few of the commission members are new and were not, or did not act on that. It was the American Square Development, so within the South Loop District. So Mall of America is over here where my cursor is. So it's on the eastern side of the South Loop District and it encompasses the three boundaries of the project or of the proposal. And so zooming in, here's a closer look. The developer group for this is the Kading Development Group and Ron Clark. They're doing a joint venture called QOZ. And so the first phase is the AIN, the Arter. It is a 242-unit market rate apartment with potential construction starting this fall. The second phase is the Quinn, which will be located just south of the existing ramp. It's approximately preliminary plans, which were approved through the PD process, was for an approximately 86-unit apartment complex, which, which 100% of those units would be affordable at the 60% area median income. In addition, there would be a separate 313-stall parking ramp just to the north and potential construction on this would be in the summer of 2021. However, as stated, this is, just, this did receive preliminary approval and final approvals would be occurring either later this fall or winter when they finalize those plans. So it's kind of a closer look at the properties. So that's for phase one. This is the site plan for phase one. Here's a rendering of the project. A lot, and this is a view for along American Boulevard looking south. There's the area of phase two. And here's kind of the site plan for that proposal. As you can see here, the building, the 86-unit building is here on the southern portion and that separate parking ramp lies just to the north. So as previously stated, kind of the financing considerations that the Port Authority is considering is a housing TIF district with which we would be looking to capture the total increment from both phases, phase one and phase two. However, the assistance that is captured would only be going towards phase two, the affordable project. And just a more, a little bit of understanding, the TIF plan, which is before you tonight, does not establish the amount of assistance. It is only the structure to capture that future increment. The actual assistance will be a negotiation between the Port Authority and the developer and will be brought before the Port Authority Commission at a later date when they approve the development agreement. And so as previously stated, the TIF plan for the Planning Commission Authority is to make sure that the TIF plan conforms to the general plans for development of the city as a whole. And so as the TIF plan outlines, in order to receive TIF assistance, the phase two project will need to conform to the two following requirements. It will need to be majority residential uses. And so no more than 20% of the total square footage can be used for non-residential uses. And then there's the affordability structure. They have to meet two, either, either of the two standards. It has to be at least 20% of the units occupied by tenants, at least 50% AMI, or at least 40% of the units occupied by tenants making 60% area median income or less. And as previously stated, the project that they are proposing is that 100% of the units would be occupied by 60% AMI. And so they do meet this threshold. So as previously stated, this project was preliminarily approved by the Planning Commission and City Council back in June. The site is zoned, a high-intensity mixed use with residential and is guided South Loop mixed use. Both of those, the guide plan and the zoning, do permit residential, multifamily residential properties. In addition, the comprehensive plan has two goals specifically to housing. One is to provide a range of housing choices and to provide affordable housing to serve local demand. This project is meeting both of those requirements or goals and visions stated within the Forward 2040 and is meeting the city's regional allocation of at least 840 additional units affordable to households at 51% to 80%, 31% to 50% and less than 30% area median income. Kind of next steps for this project after tonight, if the planning commission approves the planning commission resolution that it conforms with the comp plan, this will be going before the city council for a public hearing at the August 3rd meeting. And then it'll be going before the Port Authority for consideration of the TIF plan at their August 11th meeting. Phase one construction is looking to begin later this fall. And then final development plan for the phase two is potentially going to come before the Planning Commission and City Council, either the fall or winter of 2022, which at then the same time, the Port Authority would consider the development agreement and the financial assistance for this package. So with that, staff recommends approve the following motion, approving the consistency of the TIF plan with the comprehensive plan. And with that, I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Commission members, are there any questions for Mr. Schmidt? Commissioner Goldsman.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of different questions. So first of all, I know we, we reviewed this application, approved it last month. This TIF process, I guess the question I have is who, who is the initiator? What was the initiator of defining this parcel or this project as part of a TIF project?
Sure, Mr. Chair and Commissioner. So ultimately, when the applicant came in for their, for the development, they met with the city, city team, both from the Port Authority, planning, Public Works. And from that, they looked at as far as how they could meet the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. And so reviewing that whole process, it came to be determined that they, and this is multiple iterations that we actually reviewed for this project. And this is the final one that they are at with right now. However, they're hoping to amend it even further to include more affordability than what's being proposed. What we noticed is, is that there was a financial gap on the affordable element. And so with that, we looked at the various financial tools that we have in our toolkit at the Port Authority and presented options to the Port Authority Commission back in April. At that, at their recommendation, they had advised staff to move forward with the creation of a housing TIF district to be able to capture the tax increment from phase one. And then when the, the developer came forward with the actual plans for phase two, we would then work on negotiations of how much of that financial assistance we would then recommend for that project.
Thank you. And Mr. Sheriff, if I may ask one more question?
Go ahead.
So not being a tax savvy individual, I guess, are, are there any adverse or negative impacts of having this district and tax incremental collection that we, that we should be aware of in the city's perspective?
And so, Mr. Chair and Commissioner, that, that is something that when this goes before the city council and the Port Authority, or excuse me, yeah, and the Port Authority, they will be reviewing that. One of the major impacts is, and let me go back to my original slide here. And so it really comes down to is, is when we're capturing that increment. And so we are analyzing this to see, you know, but for that tax increment, will this development occur? And so right now, based on staff's initial review of the early pro forma, there's a very large gap in providing affordable housing in this area. And so what we're looking to do is, is to capture the increment from both the phase one and phase two to bring in more affordable units. So 100%, so those 86, versus either 40% at 60 or 20% at 50. And so kind of the adverse impact would be the phase one. Right now, it looks like it will, it's going to be moving forward without assistance. So any increment there would not be going to all of these taxing jurisdictions. We would be capturing it in essence to then, to meet the city's vision of providing additional affordable units within this area.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Schmidt? Okay, well, the, oh, Commissioner Corman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Schmidt, could you go back to that slide that you had previously? And could you just elaborate a little bit more or help me understand a little bit more about that base value and how the city relates there with the county and the school district?
Sure, Mr. Chair and Commissioner. And so with the creation of a TIF plan, we have to follow multiple state statute requirements. And so 30 days prior to this meeting, and I'm going to get the days wrong here, but it was over 30 days, we had to send a letter to the county commissioner letting them know that we were looking at creating this TIF district in this area. Within 30 days of the notice of the public hearing, with which the public hearing was published today in the paper for our August 3rd meeting, we had to send the draft TIF plan to both the county and the school district, identifying the increment that would, would be captured based on our estimated valuations of this future development. And so they have the chance to then go ahead and review what this increment value would be but for this project moving forward. And so those two agencies then have the opportunity to speak at the city council meeting or provide written comment with regards to the, to the TIF plan.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Corman?
I think so. Thank you.
Okay. All right. All right, any additional questions for Mr. Schmidt? Okay, as this is not a public hearing, at this point, I guess, do we have anybody else that would like to speak to this? Do you, any additional staff, Mr. Markergard?
Mr. Chairman, we do have a representative of the developer present with questions, but it's not a public hearing, so it would be just a few of questions.
Okay. Any commissioners have questions for representative of the development? Okay, not seeing any. The question before you is a motion essentially to find that this is consistent with the general development plan for the city of Bloomington, unless there's any additional discussion between the planning commission. Commissioner Roman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Point of order, do we need to move to close the public hearing?
There is not a public hearing.
This is not a public hearing, okay.
Not a public hearing, correct.
That's the point of order.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, I would look for a motion from one of the commissioners. All right, I would look for a motion from one of the commissioners. Commissioner Goldsman?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I move to adopt the resolution attached to the staff report finding the modification to the amended and restated development plan for the American Square Development Project and the TIF plan for District Number 1K, located therein to be consistent with the general plan for the development of the city of Bloomington.
All right, looking for a second, Commissioner Albrecht?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Corman?
Aye.
Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
And Commissioner Cookdon?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. That motion passes unanimously. That will be signed later tonight, Mr. Schmidt. Thank you. And if we can move forward to item number four, Mr. Johnson, are you prepared for the staff report?
I am. Thank you, Chairman Solberg. Share my screen here. It's a short presentation. Can you guys see that? Okay?
We can see that.
Sorry.
You're at the end.
Okay, yeah, we have a pretty modest application here for you. And item four, this is final site and building plans at Oak Grove Presbyterian Church. The property is just at the intersection of Penn Avenue and West Old Chocopee Road. So you can see the church property highlighted in yellow. What they are proposing to construct is two columbaria structures. You know, columbaria, for those who don't know, are structures that hold cremains. And this type of structure is permitted as an accessory use, but must get final site and building plan approval from the planning commission. So they are proposing two of these structures in this approximate location. There you can see their site plan from the agenda packet. They are proposing to have a plaza in between the two columbaria structures. They, in anecdotal conversations with the applicant, they propose to install some landscaping in the area as well. The structures themselves, each structure holds 200 urns. It's constructed out of granite and limestone. It's four feet tall and a little under 20 square feet in footprint size. So these are not very large structures by any means. Just a couple of things to think about. These structures must be screened from adjacent residential uses. So there is residential uses across the street. So there is a condition of approval recommended that they screen the columbaria structures. That likely can be done with plantings, likely evergreen plantings or some type of fence. In terms of other miscellaneous issues, you know, site disturbance is typically done, or landscaping is typically installed by the amount of site disturbance. So we'll keep an eye on that, what the full site disturbance of the project is. And then if any, similar to item one tonight, if any existing landscape material is removed, that would have to be replaced on site. If any lighting is installed with the columbaria, sometimes we see architectural lighting that would need to comply with city code from a dark skies perspective and power, et cetera. Staffs recommending approval. Here's a suggested motion. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions for Mr. Johnson from commission members? Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. One question about the plaza. Is there going to be seating? Do you mind pulling that back up? Just thinking about the use of that area. So the plaza is just a cement pad? Or is it going to be a permeable surface, thinking about water runoff? And then obviously, usage by people that would like to, you know, reflect and visit those individuals?
Yeah, Chairman Solberg, Commissioner Goldsman, good question. I don't believe the material for the patio or plaza has been finalized yet. Certainly, some material is more pervious than others in terms of just a disturbance standpoint, just from a code compliance factor. You know, it doesn't, it's not large enough to trigger typical stormwater management requirements, but we'll certainly keep an eye on that as well. I don't know if the church has flushed out full programming or use of the plaza area. This is all they've provided us thus far, and we did review it for compliance with our setback requirements, both for the structures and for the plaza. And they do meet our required setbacks.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions for staff? Seeing none, Mr. Markergard, do we have the applicant on?
We do, and I will unmute the applicant at this time.
Yeah, any further questions? This is Rod Myers, Oak Grove Presbyterian Church.
Okay. Anybody have questions for the applicant this time? I am seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Myers. I have no questions for you at this time.
Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Markergard, do we have anybody else from the public at this time that would like to speak to the application?
Mr. Chairman, we have nobody registered and nobody in the queue. I'll verify with Mr. Pease that he has not heard from anybody.
Correct. Nobody else is called.
Chairman Solberg, this is Planner Johnson again. Just to confirm, I haven't received any written correspondence on this application.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I appreciate that. All right, seeing that nobody from the public is available for comment or making comments, do I have a motion by one of the commissioners to close the public hearing? Commissioner Corman?
I move that we close the public hearing at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Corman. Is there a second? Commissioner Goldsman?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Corman?
Aye.
Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
And Commissioner Cookdon?
Aye.
Thank you. And that's an aye for myself. The motion carries. Public hearing is closed. Any discussion on this application before us? If none, I would accept a motion. Commissioner Cookdon?
This looks like a good application, Mr. Chair. There's plenty of existing screening on the site, which will help the applicant screen these two structures from the residential uses across the street. And it looks to me to be a good application. If there's no further comments from other commissioners, I'm happy to make a motion.
Seeing none. Go ahead if you please.
Mr. Chair, in case PL 2020-97, having been able to make the required findings, I move to approve final site and building plans to construct two columbaria structures at an existing place of assembly located at 2200 West Old Chocopee Road, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Thank you. Commissioner Albrecht?
Second.
Thank you. Having a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Corman?
Aye.
Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
And Commissioner Cookdon?
Aye.
And aye for myself. That motion passes unanimous. Final decision, that will be a final decision on item number four, Oak Grove Presbyterian Church. Final decision unless there is an appeal received by 4:30 on July 28th. And item number four concludes our regular meeting for this evening. All those that are still online are welcome to join us. We will move into our study session immediately following this. However, it will not be televised. And thank you for all those watching tonight.